City Council Committee, hold the order roll call, please.
Here.
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 Oh, I'm sorry, Hicks.
Yeah.
Joe.
Here.
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 We have a quorum.
Quite forgettable.
First item this morning is an update from the Center for the Arts, and we'll call on our good friend, Michael Bergeraf from the Center for the Arts. Good morning, Michael.
Good morning, and good morning, Council. Good morning, staff. Good morning, everyone. As I try once a year to get over to let everyone know kind of what's going on, I want to start today with a huge thank you. I have worked in a number of different towns and communities, and I want to let you know that continually this city is one that supports us, that backs things that's going on, and I am just thrilled to have all of you sitting where you are, doing the things that you do, so I don't have to. It's all wonderful. The Center for the Arts is a wonderful business here in town, and I do want to thank the city for their phases and the projects that you're doing up at the Kirkbride. When you took the outbuildings out a couple of years ago, you made one of the most absolutely incredible amphitheaters there are across the state. The sound when we do concerts back there bounces off that beautiful building. People love it, the space, love the area. And with that, we continue to expand our programming up at the Kirkbride. We are now looking to do no less than eight shows up there this summer, two of them specifically for youth. I understand you're very busy today, so I won't go through all the programming. You can look at it on our website, but do know that we are hitting people of all ages. When the first concert that we did up there, we had about sixty, seventy people that showed up in the rain during COVID, spread out about twenty feet between people. And last year, our largest was two thousand, and as we continue to build, we believe that every concert is going to be two thousand plus people up at the Kirkbride. So, a huge thank you. A thank you to Guy and Bill who come up and set up the stage, and the folk that do that, to make sure that we have a place to perform, to the people who mow the lawn, to make sure that people can walk across there wonderfully. The electricity that's up there, the porta potties that come, the waste, the recycling. I just want to say thank you. I don't know that you hear it enough. This city does an incredible job, and we could not do this without you and your partnership. We do a lot of things, and we enjoy doing them, and can't do it without your help. So, eight shows downtown, or eight shows at the Kirkbride. We're planning on one in September. If it doesn't work on Lincoln, we're moving it up to the Kirkbride, and then we have a full season coming up. We average a little over, somewhere in the neighborhood of fifteen to twenty thousand people a year that are coming through our facilities to see the events that we're doing. And the fun thing to say is with the outreach that we do, we are meeting that many students in the area as well, not just Fergus Falls, but the surrounding community. So, to keep it short, thank you, thank you, thank you all. And unless there are questions, I'm done.
Thanks, Michael.
Thank you.
The community does a wonderful job. That's because you do a wonderful job at the Center for the Arts. The Arts are a pillar of the community, and Center for the Arts is, of course, one of those organizations that the community cherishes. So, thank you, Michael, for the work.
Thank you.
Questions? Tom?
Just a comment. I had the pleasure of working with, volunteering with the Nunquanas to park cars at an event. Was that last year, Gene? I don't know, the years all blur together, but...
Yes, they do.
Is it still 2020? But I was, I was very pleasantly surprised by the number of not, folks that I didn't recognize, meaning, you know, people that aren't in my usual circles that are coming to these events, and then a lot of young families, and then a lot of North Dakota plates. I noticed a surprising number, so we've got people that are coming from other communities to take advantage of that, and hopefully stop and eat and shop a little bit while they're here. So, we really appreciate all of your efforts.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Michael. Any other?
Yeah, just say thanks, Michael. You do a good job.
Appreciate you all.
It wouldn't happen without you and Bill.
Thank you, Michael.
I've seen Bill serve popcorn before.
All right. Thank you, Michael. Next item on the agenda this morning is a Code of Conduct Polity for Official, Elected Officials discussion, and we'll turn it over to our city attorney, Rolf Nikolow, to kick that discussion off.
Thank you, Rolf. Good morning, Council, and I would like to say good morning to, we have a number of Charter Commission members here today, so thank you for coming this morning, Charter Commission members, too. Earlier this year, the council requested staff to look into a code of conduct, code of ethics, and staff reviewed it, primarily looked around what other cities have done, and primarily Alexandria had recently adopted a code of ethics. And so, what's before you is a lot to pull in from them. Recently, there were some discussions relating to conflicts of interest, and so I went ahead and looked into that a little further, and found a policy from Golden Valley which attached to this code of conduct, because I think that kind of goes hand in hand with what we're talking about here. So, staff compiled a document for your review, for your discussion, for your thoughts and considerations. This is an important document. It's a document that regulates and discusses conduct that council is to have amongst itself, conduct that council is to have with the public, and conduct that the council will have with staff. And I think, at least as far as I'm concerned, I think this document encompasses a lot. And I think it sets forth some minimum standards that I think everyone can agree that, for the most part, are things that we should know already. But it doesn't hurt to always have things written down, because this makes you folks accountable to each other, and has a document that you folks can look to for guidance, and a document that, if there's any concerns, that you can look to raise those concerns or to address those concerns. This is a document that looks, that is adopted by the council, and so you own this document. And so, this is, this is something that you need to take very seriously. And the purpose of our discussion, I think, today is just to flesh out what, if there's concerns with this document, if there's some suggested edits. Councilmember Jobe had provided some comments that were provided to you previously that I think some of, we can have some discussions on that if you would like. I do have a couple thoughts on some of the items that Councilmember Jobe raises about she's wanting to have some definitions attached, which are very, very difficult. I think of, when you talk about expressions such as integrity, professional manner, honesty, those types of things are really hard to articulate in words. And I look at it much along the lines as Justice Stewart looked at another subject. I know it when I see it. Justice Stewart was talking about pornography in a famous decision back in the 50s. When we talk about honesty and integrity, we know what it looks like. When we talk about dishonesty, we know what that looks like, too. So, I mean, I know it would be helpful to have some definitions, but, you know, some of these, some of these terms are hard to define. And it may, it depends upon the aid of you to kind of define those terms as you move forward. You know what, in the back of your mind, what some of these terms mean, and I, you know, if you would like to have some language to define some of these terms, we could take a crack at it, but I think, for the most part, I think the council, as a collective, has a pretty good idea what honesty and integrity is all about. And so, you know, Councilmember Jobe has some items here that I think are good points to discuss. One item is, that she brings up is that even private conversations can have public presence, and about the fact that the council needs to interact with each other to come to decisions, and I agree, you do. However, we have to be very mindful of the open meeting law, and I think I've tried to, I don't want to say harp, but I guess I will say harp, that five is the magic number.
Andrew does that all the time.
Yeah. And I don't have any issue with council members having discussions amongst themselves. It's just I have an issue when you, when five of you do. And that's when you run the risk of violating the open meeting laws. So, when you're lingering around before or after a council meeting, I think Andrew has taken it upon himself to say, you know, move the conversation out of here, because there's, when the meeting's done, and five of you are sitting around and you're talking, that potentially could be a violation of the open meeting laws. So, I mean, we encourage discussion amongst council members. We just have to be mindful of the open meeting laws, and that when there's five of you, let's not, let's not have those city discussions, because that could constitute a meeting. The other, couple other items, limit contact to specific city staff. I'm going to call on Andrew to talk on that a little bit, and to talk about criticizing individual employees, because, I mean, we have to be careful a little bit. And so, Andrew, if you wouldn't mind talking a little bit about that.
Yes, Your Honor, members. Feeling a little under the weather this morning, so forgive me. I haven't spent much time thinking about this, quite honestly. But I did read the comments, and just real quickly, one of the things that, in an organization like ours, with our former government, we try to do is limit interaction with, from council members with staff outside of our department head team. The reason is, I don't want staff, and we hear this from staff all the time, that they feel conflicted when that happens. What happens is, they end up taking the conversation with a council member as a form of direction to them with their work, which may be in conflict with what their supervisor is giving them as direction, and all of a sudden, they fall themselves in a really challenging place. We had a very good internal operations meeting last Tuesday, where we had all of our supervisors of the city, thirty people, come together and share about what they were doing, and I wrapped that up by talking a little bit about the struggles we've had with our city council at the beginning of the year here. And it was very clear, I want to keep those things separate, because there's good people doing very good work on behalf of the city in operations and our day-to-day essential functions. And I don't think we need to cloud that work with some of the challenges that we've experienced as a group here in this room. So, I just, I would caution that we get too off track. We don't want to get too far off track with council members, you know, giving direction or interacting with the staff outside of the folks in this room. And I, you know, some cities are very particular, that you only talk to the city administrator. I don't feel that way. I fully trust our department head team. They're fully capable, and, you know, I think that would be a good place to keep our dialogue at the council level, for sure, department heads and above. So, that's my thought on that. As far as individual staff concerns, I certainly would welcome those anytime. And we get them, frankly. We deal with staffing challenges all the time, and concerns and complaints, and, you know, I certainly don't want somebody to stand at this podium and degrade an individual member or member of city staff. That can be handled more appropriately. We take those concerns very seriously. So, if it's about the city employee other than myself, bring them right to me, if you don't mind. If it's about me, certainly, you know, the city attorney, or the mayor, and all of you can figure out how you want to address that, and, you know, the public should be bringing those concerns to your attention rather than standing up here, because employees do have rights that would entitle them for things to be handled in a certain way. I just want to make sure that we're respectful of that and careful of saying things are out of line, so... I don't know if I need to say anything more than that, but, you know, I haven't given that any thought. I'm just trying to stand my feet.
No, thank you. Thank you for that. Thank you for that. And so, and just continuing in looking at Councilmember Jobe's comments, the only other point that I want to just kind of bring out is on, it's under Make No Promises on behalf of the council, page eight. I think that, and it says the part that states it is inappropriate to express personal feelings, the actual document says it's appropriate. So, I think that, that the way it's worded is what you would like it to say, because it does say it's appropriate to express personal feelings, or positions on an issue, or to give a brief overview of city policy, and to refer to city staff or council for further information. If you don't like the sentence, take it out. We don't, we don't really care. This is, this is your document.
Page, Your Honor?
I'm on page eight, and it says under Mayor and Council Conduct in Unofficial Settings, it says Make No Promises on behalf of the council, and if you look the third line down, is, it says appropriate. I think it was just a... Yeah, I think it is appropriate for you to have, to have feelings on it and comment to the, express your personal feelings and position on issues. I think that's what your elected officials ask you to do. So, and there was an additional request to add a section relating to implementation, and, you know, again, I, that probably makes some sense to add that language in. So, this is our stab at providing you with a policy, and it's your policy, so what would you like us to do with this?
Thanks, Rolf. So, if people have some questions, comments, and I know the Charter Commission's here, will welcome any comments from them, any one from the public wants to comment this morning as well. And then I would suggest we list to the council after they get some input this morning for further discussion on Monday night, but let's open up to the council first.
Obviously, I got a couple comments. I, I kind of think that obviously on, for one, I probably should say that it's kind of a sad day that we actually have to implement this. Overall, you know, as Rolf said, you know, this is about kind of, you know, ethics and what is right and what is wrong. And I, you know, I will admit, I'm not necessarily a particularly church-going person, but I believe that I have fairly decent barometers when it comes to morals and ethics. And when I first came to the States, my son played soccer, and we were at a tournament in Colorado, and, you know, we would pray before every game to respect, obviously, you know, the Lord. And at the end of the game, we lost, and it was one kid's birthday, and somebody brought a sheet cake. And during that, during that, the other team walked past us, and we lost miserably. And the kids started to throw cake at these boys. And the coaches at the time didn't stop those boys from doing that. I grabbed my son's hand, and we were traveling with another child, and I grabbed him and pulled him off the field, and we went back to the hotel. And, because it was wrong, you know. And I think that's kind of where, you know, and at the end of that, the two coaches came to me and apologized for not stopping the boys from doing it. And we all know what is right and what is wrong. And, you know, the reason we're here today, in a way, is because of actions, you know, that, you know, some people have taken in terms of knocking on doors and, you know, condemning other people running for city council or standing up and making political speeches. And I think, you know, the fact that we have to adopt this is really a sad day. We all morally should be able and capable of doing this. And I think that, you know, the challenge is, this is kind of a lengthy document, and I don't know how we condense this into being, you know, one page. It should be fairly simple to know what is right and wrong. And, and I think unfortunately, once you start getting into legal documents, then it ends up being sixteen pages, and it's, now we have another thing to police. And I don't know whether it's possible just to condense this to say, you know, what is right and what is wrong. And, and I don't know how we do that, Rolf, but, you know, and I know from a, once you get an attorney involved, I mean, they get paid by the word, so... You know, they like a lot of words, but, I mean, if we could condense this down to one sheet that just says, you know, this is right and this is wrong. And if you do something that's wrong, you're going to get chastised for it. And I don't know how we do that.
Right. I do have, I do have some thoughts on that. I agree, this is a lengthy document. I'm not claiming, I'm not claiming authorship in any of it.
I know you're not. I'm just joking. I know you don't judge by the word, by the minute.
As I said, you know, this, this document regulates your conduct. This is a document you own. This is our first crack at providing you at least a template. And my suggestion would be is perhaps you adopt a committee of four, not five, a committee of four, and, and take ownership in this, and pare it down to bare essentials as to what you feel are the minimum standards of which you expect each other to comply with. I mean, I, I think that makes the most sense, because we can come back with another draft, but we can't get into your mind just what you want. And so, I mean, my suggestion is, is that the council actually take ownership on this document and form a subcommittee for purposes of, you know, paring it down.
Thanks, Rolf. Other comments? Yeah?
Yeah, I'd just like to say thank you, Anthony, for your description. I actually, in order to keep my licenses, a couple state licenses and a national license, I have to take ethics every year, so I'm very well-versed on those sorts of things. What I would like to see is if we could work out some type of a meeting between the city council, if it's four, if it's everyone here, I'd like to see everyone here, along with the Charter Commission, and go through it word by word and line by line. Because let's not make another mistake. Let's, let's see if we can get this really what it should be. And the Charter Commission is very well-versed in these sorts of things, too. So, let's kind of take a cue from these guys and gals, and we can, we can maybe work together and get some really good wording on that. I mean, Rolf, what do you think of that?
I think you need to ask them.
Okay.
I, I, the Charter Commission serves a special function in our city and primarily uses, utilizes its time to address charter issues. I'm not exactly sure this is necessarily a charter issue, but, I mean, if the Charter Commission is willing to expend its time on working cooperatively, I mean, I have no issue with that at all, of course.
Also, too, how, how long is our current code of ethics, or code of conduct? I mean, I guess we have to, you know, let's, let's compare these.
It's, it's, it's in city code, and it's probably, I mean, it, the code of conduct that's in city code deals with a number of issues, including conflict of interest, but it also deals with, you know, self-dealing gifts, that type of stuff. But it doesn't necessarily deal with council interactions with each other, council interactions with staff, council interactions with the public. And that's, that, I think, is what was the original kind of concern that was brought forward for, to staff.
Also, too, I think, you know, if, since the Charter Commission does, you know, oversee these codes of conduct and things of that nature, I would like to ask if they would be involved in some type of a looking at over with what we have and what this is, to go through it line by line and make a good decision on what, what is the correct terminology or wording on that.
Thanks, Al. We can certainly ask the Charter Commission not to put them on the spot today, but maybe as part of the discussion Monday night, you could let us know if that's something that you'd be interested in helping us craft as we go forward. I think that, I'd like to point out that, you know, if we get outside of this body, it's going to give us a little bit more credibility, right? And to the point of, I don't think any of us, to Rolf's point, I'm not going to sit here and define honesty, right? Like, I don't think any of us have to define honesty. But at the same time, I think any, any place we work, just like your place, Al, there is a code of ethics, and unfortunately, you know, there's going to be people that push that, and so to have a code of ethics, I think, gives us credibility with the public. If we can ask the Charter Commission to help us craft that, I certainly wish we lived in a world where we didn't have to have that, but unfortunately, we don't. And so, we'll put that together. Other comments for the, for the, for the council? Scott, please.
I think, I think you're going to be looking for a motion at some point to do something, so why don't I offer something, just to put something on the table? And that would be to request the mayor create a subcommittee, as was suggested by Rolf, of no more than four council members and other members of either the Charter Commission or other people as thought-good by the mayor, to create that subcommittee and engage them to revise and edit this document and bring it back to us at a further, at a future date.
Thanks, Scott. There's a motion.
I'll second, and I'll volunteer to be on that committee.
Thanks, Scott. There's a motion, second, and, yeah, I'd be happy to bring a suggestion back to the council on Monday night. You guys can talk through that, and I'll talk to the Charter Commission before then, too. If anyone has questions of other individuals who might serve on that, I'd be happy to entertain those, too. Yes, Tom?
I, yeah, I agree with Councilmember Hicks on, on the fact that, that, you know, adopting this is kind of a sad day. You know, we got through the first six years that I was on the council just fine, without having to do this. And, and I would take the position that we don't need to spend a whole lot of time wordsmithing it. I think that, I think that topics are well-covered in here. I mean, there's, yeah, and there's ambiguity, like, you know, Rolf was saying earlier. I mean, these terms can be hard to define, but a person should just, I mean, just know, you know, the difference between right and wrong. And, yeah, and it is unfortunate that we have to adopt this, but it's a good thing. You know, it's, it's, I mean, because I've, I've heard from, you know, more constituents in the last few months than I usually do on average, and, and a lot of the comments are, you know, when are you guys going to quit the petty bickering and get back to work? And so, I, I don't think we need to spend a lot of time wordsmithing this. I think everybody needs to read it and study it, and, and everybody needs to just act in a manner that is, you know, commensurate with the positions that we hold. And, and not, you know, nobody should be trying to undermine any other council member. You know, if you have an issue with somebody, you need to, you know, hold that conversation in private and not try to bring as much attention to it as you possibly can. And, I mean, we just, we need to just knock this off and get back to work. So, I think the less time we spend, you know, tweaking this and wordsmithing it and studying every line, and the more time that we can spend getting back to work to serving our constituents would be in the interest of our community.
Thanks, Tom. Yeah, Scott?
Just to give a couple of examples of some of the specifics that we might discuss in a subcommittee, there were some requests or some, I don't know if you call it definitions or what you'd call it, the statements in this document, for example, that the city administrator needs to be copied on any questions to the staff, or that before sending any correspondence, that we need to check with the staff or check with the city administrator. Things like that that are spelled out in here that sound really like a good idea. I'm not so sure that Andrew would appreciate me contacting him every time I get a, I get a question from him. And so, I mean, there's some, some details in here that we could probably improve the document some with some, with some editing that are fairly simple, as far as that goes. You know, as far as sharing any correspondence that we have with the rest of the council, that would be another question. There are some things that you'd want to do that with, and some things where it's just not practical, not, not necessary. So, I think it would be important to go through and at least clean up some of that that's relatively simple and that there wouldn't be much disagreement on. And the process to do that, I think, would be greatly simplified by just having a subcommittee work through it. And for us to go through here line by line, I think, would put everybody to sleep. And then for those who are still awake, they'd just be frustrated. So, I think it would be better to just move on with a smaller group, and then come back with a document that's a little cleaner.
Thanks, Scott. And we do have a motion to that effect? Oh, yeah.
I'd just like to say, too, I, I agree with you, too, Scott. I know what you're saying. Some of that is very, you know, not real practical, maybe. And, you know, when I say line by line, doesn't mean that we have to sit there and dwell on it, but we want to make sure that this is a proper document, well-documented, well-written, so we don't have any issues down the road. Because evidently, we did have some issues down the road with this current code of conduct that we have. So, that's kind of where, where we're at with that. Also, too, I just need to, want to hear what the motion is once again, too, if you wouldn't mind?
Yeah, I believe the motion is to ask the mayor to bring back a suggestion for a committee consisting of council, and potentially, if they're willing, the Charter Commission. a committee consisting of council and potentially, if they're willing, the charter commission to sit down, go through this, come back to the council with a recommendation.
Yeah, I just wanted the clarification on the charter commission. Thank you.
I think, you know, just to add on that, I think it would be, because there is a lot of, like, reference to the city charter in this document, so I think it would be good if we could have a couple of charter commissions.
Certainly ask them, and if they'll be willing to serve on that. Any other questions, comments, before we vote on the motion to bring this to the council on Monday night? All favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a lodging tax request from Visit Fergus Falls, and we'll call on our finance director, Bill Salmar.
Mr. Frank?
Yes.
You did say it.
Yeah, certainly. I did say that, so I'm going to keep to my word, please, Mr. Frank. And if, obviously, I'll be talking with the charter commission. If anyone has any comments this morning, you're also more than welcome to say them.
My name's Al Frank. I live in...
Go ahead, Mr. Frank, please.
Pardon?
Go ahead, please.
My name's Al Frank. I live at 1209 South Cal Court, and I spoke to the mayor about commenting on this document. Most of what I had has already been submitted and covered here today. And I agree with Mr. Hicks, it should be condensed. And I agree with what Rolf started out with, as far as a lot of this is common sense. But we all know in today's world, common sense is lacking. So we need something like this. However, it needs to be condensed, as Mr. Hicks said. And Rolf, when he was talking about definitions, he said, "Well, you know, we know what it is." Yeah, we should know what it is, as far as these terms that he used. But I think in the end, he said, "If the definitions need to be looked at, we'll take a stab at it." And I think he should take a stab at it. I'll give you an example. There's been a little bit of back and forth in the last years between council meetings. Take the word respect. If I'm a councilperson, and I'm talking to another councilperson, and we're talking about a topic, a single topic, and I disagree with him, and he or she disagrees with me, and we're not getting anywhere, and I just say, "Well, I think your ideas..." pardon the language, "bullshit." Is that being disrespectful to them?
I think it is, actually.
To me, I don't think so.
I think it is.
But to somebody else...
I'd appreciate if you wouldn't use the language at the council meeting as well. So, go ahead, continue, yeah.
I wanted not to say it, but I need to draw a picture so you understand what's going on. So it's, I think definitions, as Rolf said, we should take a stab at it. Granted, common sense tells you what they are, but that don't always happen.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Frank. All right, moving along. Next, we have a discussion of lodging tax request from Visit Fergus Falls, and again, we'll call on our city finance director, Bill Salmar. Good morning, Bill.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Yeah, the Visit Fergus Falls, our local convention and visitors bureau, is making a request that the lodging tax be expanded to temporary rentals, so like Airbnb's, VRBO's, and municipal campgrounds. So Minnesota statute allows for cities to expand that lodging tax to those temporary rentals. I understand other cities around the state are doing such, and it can be expanded to municipal campgrounds. Now, not private campgrounds, right? Looking to Sandy for confirmation on that. So, for instance, the campground that's off the racetrack temporarily during that event, it would not apply to that. So it would only apply to our city campground would be one option. So the lodging tax was established back in 1990. We can see that in our city code that was adopted. State statute allows for 3% lodging tax, so that's charged at the hotels in town by the people that are staying there. And the city then could withhold up to 5% of that for administration. The city currently, and always has, withheld 3%, not 5%. So 97% then is forwarded over to the CVB for the operations. Now, lodging tax cannot be used for bricks and mortar to build a building, but it's used for the marketing of the city and whatnot. And so that's the current request. Visit Fergus Falls is making to you as the city council, if you'd like to expand that. Now, I know on the campground, I looked at our revenues last year, it's maybe $650 on the campground that, under our current, what we collected. Now, certainly, when we get that project done out there, and rates are probably different, that, of course, would look different, but, so, it's not a huge dollar, certainly, there. I don't know what they would be on Airbnb's. I don't, you know, we maybe have 11 Airbnb's in town, maybe plus some VRBO's. I don't know what the estimates would be. And lodging tax by unit, I can't share that anyway. That's protected data. You know, we can share lodging tax that the city collected in total, but not by property, because, of course, that would, you know, give away trade secrets, or, you know, the capacity you could then start comparing between. So that's the request today. I'll stop there and see if you have questions. We have Rolando here, too, if you have questions, and Sandy's here, too, and she attends the board meeting and is more averse than this than I am, so.
Thank you, Bill. Rolando, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, a lot of cities...
Just grab them. No, no, you're all right.
I'm fine.
Yeah, you're right, just, for the audience at home.
There's many, many cities in Minnesota already doing it, and, you know, every cent counts, you know, to promote the city and to, you know, to help the economy of the town with visitors coming here and spending money and shopping and hotels and stuff. And, yeah, I mean, the fact that we don't have that, and actually, now that I am in Fergus Falls, I realize, you know, that every cent counts to make, you know, to make the promotion happens all around. I mean, we have cities like Alexandria, like even Detroit Lakes, I mean, they spend a good amount of money promoting their towns, and that's something that you're going to see the results. I mean, you promote more, you're going to get more visitors. So I think, you know, that is an opportunity. It's not going to be a huge amount of money, but every cent counts, so.
Thank you, Rolando. Questions from the staff, or someone like to make a motion?
I would make a motion that we expand the lodging tax.
Thank you. Jim, someone like to second that?
I'll second it, and I've got a question.
Yeah, thanks, Anthony. Go ahead.
How do we propose to actually, like, collect it from the Airbnb's and the VRBO's?
I believe they are, we'd have to work through...
We have to work through the companies. I mean, usually Airbnb collects the taxes themselves.
Right.
And then they pay to the cities or to the states. There's another company called Evolve that started to do the same. I know, because I have an Airbnb right here in town.
Right.
So, and, yeah, I mean, basically, those companies collect the taxes.
So we wouldn't be dealing with the 11 individual...
We just have to communicate with them and tell them, you know, this is a new tax of 3% or whatever we decide it's going to be. And they collect it and send it to the cities.
Because we work monthly with each one of our hotel properties in town. They fill out their monthly return and submit it by the 20th of the, 20th day following the month, so we'll have to do the same. And I'm glad Rolando knows more about Airbnb's than I do, so he'll help us get that implemented.
Yes, Al.
Bill, just a question. Does that go through the state of Minnesota, then, too, like?
It comes directly to the city.
Okay.
So, for instance, you know, country, and they send it right to our front desk, they return to the front desk to Randy, and she processes that every month, so.
Now, that's a lot easier than, than...
Right. So that one's not running through the state.
Any other questions? We've got a motion to bring this to the council on Monday night. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Rolando.
Thank you.
Item number four, we'll call on our city engineer, Brian Yvaro, to talk to us about a partial release of a permanent utility easement on 1007 North Tower Road. Good morning, Brian.
Hey, good morning, Your Honor and councilmembers. Yes, the owner of SCR Solutions located on 1007 North Tower Road is planning a building addition onto their existing facility. The new building addition is approximately 80 by 125 foot, and will more than double the manufacturing space. I've prepared an exhibit to kind of illustrate what we're looking at right now, calling out the existing building along with the building addition. But due to the size of this building and the orientation, how they want to affix us to the new building, I would encroach on a permanent utility easement that I have highlighted at this portion. Because of this, I looked at the existing utility that we do have installed, the depth of the pipe material and so forth, and I don't take any objection to releasing, partial release of this utility easement. Requesting about 10-foot by 185-foot, however, I just mentioned this is approximate, we're going to work with this manufacturing company, and we might refine it. I wouldn't anticipate the easement encroachment with might act, in fact, narrow. But previously, in nature, we, projects similar to this, we've done this by resolution. So it's what I'm requesting is direct to myself and the city attorney to execute the partial release of permanent utility easement for this property.
Thanks, Brian. Any questions from the council?
I might add, um...
Thanks, Anthony.
I'll make the second.
Second, yes, please, Scott.
I imagine the concern, if there was one, would be whatever kind of foundation or building was built there, that if we ever had to dig up that sewer line, we wouldn't have any problem with something either just damaging the building in some way or causing it to collapse. So this building isn't going to have a basement, it's just a slab of the foundation around the perimeter.
Based on our knowledge, yes, that is correct. And this existing utility is somewhat wider than we traditionally have, but as technology increases, too, if there is any rehab to this sewer, we take advantage of the trenches technology, too, like we do in many other areas if we've got space constraints, so.
No problem. Thanks, Scott. Any other questions for Brian? All in favor of moving this to the council Monday night, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item is also Brian Yvaro, and it's dealing with the municipal airport master plan and ALP update.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just to give you a little recap, the Fergus Falls Municipal Airport, we currently have three of four active improvement projects. Just a quick recap, the three that we have are PI 9349, that's the pavement maintenance and apron repair project, PI 9348, that's the airport fuel system replacement, 100 low lead, and PI 9350, which is the automated weather observation system relocation replacement. Of these three projects, they're planned to be constructed and substantially completed this coming fall. The fourth project that we did have, was initiated, was Public Improvement 9351, that was the instrument landing system replacement project. We were actively pursuing this project until the FAA and state began to question a few of things with the ILS location and how that related to the current runway configuration and pavement needs that we have at there. Currently, this project is on hold until the airport master plan and airport layout plan, ALP, is updated and approved by the FAA. So for the past month, SCH has been negotiating the planning work scope requirements with the FAA. SCH has proposed the fee schedule associated with the work. I've included that proposal in your packet as well. But given the complexity in the year-long planning effort that, once again, is required by the FAA, I have requested representatives from SCH to come and introduce us. They got a small presentation for this council, but I'm going to be our designated airport consultant, I primarily work with, Tim Wegworth and Melissa Underwood from SCH. So at this time, I'd just like to let them do their presentation.
Thank you, Brian. Good morning, and welcome.
Good morning. Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Your Honor, city council. It's nice to be here. Kind of a loud night last night with all the thunder and rain, but we're here. So just a brief introduction, my name's Tim Wegworth. I'm a engineer and project manager with SCH, dealing primarily with the airport. And I'm just going to turn it over to Melissa Underwood here, just to give a brief outline of the master plan process, what it involves, and I have a couple of slides at the end just to touch a little more on the current projects that Brian noted at the airport.
Thank you. Good morning, Melissa.
Good morning, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Melissa Underwood, and I'm an airport planner and project manager with SCH. And I want to just give you a brief update on this master plan project. So the previous master plan and airport layout plan that was done at the airport was in 2009. I was part of that project as well, and was officially approved in 2011. And the FAA requires this document to be updated every 10 to 15 years or so as projects are completed, so that you can look at the future 20-year plan for your airport. So it's a document that's required to be approved by the FAA, so you can continue to receive funding from them for your airport projects. If you go to the next slide, I have a brief layout of the type of funding that the city receives for the airport. So you get federal funding through the FAA, you get state funding through MnDOT Office of Aeronautics, and then there's a local contribution as well. And every year over the last 20 years, you receive entitlement funds, so that's $150,000 every year towards your airport, of federal funding, where the federal government pays 90%, the state pays 5%, and you pay 5% for your projects. What's been unique with COVID funds and the passing of the bipartisan infrastructure law is the city now receives additional funding around $159,000 to $145,000 for the next five years to work on projects as well, to keep the airport operating in a safe and efficient manner. And so this master plan would be funding using those funds from the bipartisan infrastructure law. That's covered 90% federal and 10% local at this time. However, there is a bill at the state legislature that would allow the state of Minnesota Office of Aeronautics to contribute a 5% to that match as well. So then your local share would be cut in half to 5% for this project. So if you go to the next slide, this project has advisory circulars and guidelines that we need to follow through the FAA and with MnDOT to keep your airport up to standards. And by accepting the funds from the FAA and the state, you also agree to grant obligations. So you say that you'll continue to operate your airport in a safe manner, and you'll follow these 19 grant assurances when you accept these funds, and this is one of them, to have an updated master plan and airport layout plan. And for the FAA and the state to fund your projects, you need an approved airport layout plan and the project to be on your CIP for them to proceed with this funding. So that's kind of the reason behind these projects. If you go to the next slide, this is just kind of a layout of what the process entails. It's about a year-long study. You look at everything at the airport, you start with the inventory, you look at the users, who's based there, and you develop alternatives and what your facility will look like. You develop a capital improvement plan or a 20-year funding that shows all these opportunities that your airport can receive for those projects, and then you do that updated airport layout plan. And the process is on the next slide as well. So there's a few, and if you go to the next one, there's a few focus areas that the FAA has asked us to look at at your airport. One is evaluating runway length, that instrument landing approach system that Brian mentioned, and there's other requirements listed there as well that are to be completed with this study, so that you continue to meet all their requirements. And if you go to the next slide, it also shows kind of what influences the master plan. So the users out there, we'll take a dive into who's out there today, who's going to be out there in the future. And the next slide shows that we want this to be a very collaborative effort. So we'll put together a group of stakeholders, you know, hopefully, members in the community, members that use the airport, and ultimately provide you an update with the plan, again, towards the end of the project with an open house, and then your approval at the end as So that's kind of an overview of the master plan project and why we're at this point and why the FAA has asked us to move forward with this. Are there any questions on that proposal?
Any questions in this one? Yeah, Scott, please.
For the city, we have a lobbyist at the Capitol, Joel Carlson, who's always on top of things. Is he involved in trying to get us this extra 5% that you mentioned that's currently being discussed at the legislature for the match?
I don't think he's involved in that process. This one is stemming from the Office of Aeronautics, so I know it's coming from their staff. So I'd have to look and see if he's involved with that as well.
Any other questions in this portion of the master plan presentation?
You said, obviously, it was like 10 to 15 years. Is there a reason that we're more like 10 than 15?
That's because everything that was shown from your previous plan has been completed. So you've been able to address all those, and now it's time to just see what's going to happen in the future.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move along to Tim's portion of the presentation.
Yes, and like I said, I'll keep this brief. I just wanted to touch a little bit more on those projects of the fuel system replacement project, which is a separate state-only funded grant through the Department of Aeronautics, but it's replacing the existing 100-low lead tank with a new 100-low lead tank, which is actually a split tank for the new fuel sources for aircraft and trying to go no-lead at fuel in the future will allow a transition, a transition in the future for... the future for that regard. I just included a couple of the plans, just showing the proposed improvements at the airport for the fuel system. The next slide would be the A W O S replacement and relocation. This was another push by the state, State of Minnesota Department of Aeronautics, their navigational equipment department. The existing infrastructure is aging and in need of replacements, so this project stemmed from that, where they, they, you know, requested that the airport complete the project and the infrastructure up to, but not including the actual installation of the equipment. MinDOT Aeronautics will actually come out and install the equipment once we, you know, establish all the underground and necessary infrastructure for that. And then the last project is just a airfield pavement maintenance project, so cracked seal of the bituminous pavements, and then the resealing of all of the concrete joints of the concrete general aviation apron. So this, all three of these projects are slotted to go, be constructed this year, obviously. Manpower and lead times on equipment are what's delaying the process a little bit, but we do anticipate this year yet that we will complete these projects. So I believe that's the end of our slides. Yes.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Melissa. So the requested action of the committee is to bring this to the council to initiate public improvement nine three five three, Fergus Falls Municipal Airport Master Plan along with the A L P. Any discussion related to that on Monday night?
I will offer that, your honor.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Scott? Any questions for, yeah, please, Scott.
Just a question, if we could get a copy of your slide deck or your presentation today, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. Scott, Brian, anything else to add?
Thank you, Melissa and Tim. No, your honor, I just wanted to run through what we're requesting is, yeah, initiate public improvement nine three five three, that's the airport master plan, A L P update. Also, second item is to accept H D R's independent fee evaluation for professional services in the amount of four thousand dollars, and to accept S C H's airport master plan and A L P update professional services in an amount of three hundred and sixty-four thousand two hundred. And with the budgetary impacts that I've laid out, like I mentioned, all these requested actions, along with the small administration fee of the city, is, will be funded majority by the bill grants and the extra additional five percent from the state if we're successful, so.
Thank you. We have a motion to bring this to the council Monday night. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda this morning is the two thousand twenty-three sidewalk and driveway rates. Again, Brian Yvaro.
Thank you, your honor. Yes, it's about that time of year. We, this is in regards to the two thousand twenty-three sidewalk and driveway improvement program, citywide throughout the city. We, staff, we reviewed the previous rates from last year, and we did solicit bids for upcoming program for two thousand twenty-three. And that following in the table that's included in the memo is I'm recommending the following of rates, rate adjustments for the two thousand twenty-three sidewalk program. There was some increases to be expected. We did evaluate them, but the proposed rates for remove curb and gutter, concrete, orange walk, so on so forth, are shown there, highlighted in yellow. I just want to put, make a comment there on the second row, on the second table there, and highlight yellow, that should be two thousand twenty-three, not two thousand twenty-two, so. But like I mentioned, if acceptable, these rates will be applied to all upcoming petition sidewalk program, which is initiated in a hundred percent petition by the city. The contact, I just want to recall, just from note that Troy Hoggie is our staff member that, that administers this program. So at this time, I'm just requesting initiate public improvement six zero eight zero, the two thousand twenty-three sidewalk and driveway program, and to approve the two thousand twenty-three sidewalk assessment rates.
And we can do this through a motion to the council on Monday night? Someone like to make that motion?
I may, your honor.
Thanks, Anthony and Brent. Questions for Brian? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. The motion carries. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
One more for you, Brian.
Yes, we'll get through this.
Public improvement nine five zero two, which is dealing with the old wastewater treatment plant, that motion.
Thank you, your honor. Last November, the city council accepted Otter Tail Power's letter of intent to acquire city-owned property. If we recall, the subject property is located within the old abandoned wastewater treatment plant site, just west of the Pisgah Dam, located along Tower Road. Otter Tail Power is requesting us track the land to construct a new electrical substation associated with their express feeder project. Of course, the substation needs to be complete prior to decommissioning the existing, other existing facilities, such as the substation currently located on the former dairy site, abuse substation referred to. As a condition of the letter intent, the city was required to prepare environmental site assessment, phase one. We solicited services in McCoy Environmental to provide this report. The phase one report was completed and shared, we sat down and shared it with Otter Tail Power representatives. So at this time, Otter Tail Power has reviewed this report and is not requesting a phase two. In fact, they're actually willing to move forward with a purchase agreement between Otter Tail Power and the city of Fergus Falls. If we can get this all to get, you know, initiate this information, Otter Tail Power's planning, Otter Tail Power's planning to construct this new substation in spring of two thousand twenty-four. So based on the information that we have at the time with the letter intent, the city needs to determine what we're going to do with this old wastewater site by site. I've got two options to discuss. Option one consists of demolishing only what is needed to facilitate Otter Tail Power's new substation, or option two, which consisting of demolishing all the facility once the pending purchase agreement is executed. I do have a, it's included in your packet and everything, I do have a little illustrative purposes based on what Otter Tail Power's base needs are. So at this time, I'm requesting to accept Interstate Engineering's supplemental professional services proposal for twenty-five thousand dollars. And I'm also requesting order of the project plans and specifications. And third option, third, a recommend, third option is to authorize staff to prepare the purchase agreement between Otter Tail Power and the city of Fergus Falls. Once prepared, this will be presented back to the city council for execution. So at this time, I'll just open up to any discussion you may have and intentions on how we want to proceed with demolition of this site.
Thanks, Brian. Is the financing of the demolition such that, like, there's a value to the property that we're going to recoup the twenty-five thousand invested in the engineering of the demolition from Otter Tail Power?
If I recall in the letter intent, it was a land acquisition, we have to review that a little bit more, but it is, would be the city's responsibility to, for the demolition of the sites, either being on Otter Tail Power's proposed site and/or the city, so.
Yeah, I guess I'm just, I'm not familiar with the value of the property versus what the liabilities are with this current site, so I trusted you guys do that. Just a question I have.
Well, and it's essentially a land swap where, you know, Otter Tail Power will be removing the substation from the dairy property, and then that would become the city's ownership. So, you know, that doesn't hinder the development of that property. In exchange, they have to move that infrastructure here. If we demolish the rest of the site, it would be up to the council how you want to handle the redevelopment, or if it's a park, or whatever that looks like. But there certainly would be earning potential if you wanted to redevelop rest of that property.
Thanks, Andrew.
Jim? Wouldn't it make sense to demolish the whole thing rather than do half now and half later? I mean, you're in there now demolishing it, do the whole thing? That would be my suggestion.
Is it, do you have a recommendation to the, sorry, I should have asked that first?
Yeah, and I would make that a motion.
Thank you. To bring it to the council to accept?
To bring it to the council that we demolish the whole thing.
And accept the engineering report and authorize staff?
Yep. I'll second that too. And I, I agree, we need to demolish the whole thing.
Okay, there's a motion to bring this to the council with the recommendation of going through the whole thing. Scott?
Just a question as far as the funding. If I remember when we've discussed this before, the various funding pockets that we've got, wastewater treatment fund, whatever, there's a fair amount of money already essentially kind of targeted for this work. But to what degree is that a fully funded project? I'm not, I'm not real clear on that.
Yeah, your honor, Councilmember, this has been included in the C I P for many years, and it has been pushed, you know, delayed a little bit. Believe, we have secured it, but it's been a C I P to demolish the entire site. Once we start final design, we'll have to update the costs and everything. But projections are showing too that, being it was in a C I P, and we do have adequate funds in the Santeras Sewer Enterprise Fund, where a majority, if not all, of this project will be funded through.
Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, Laura?
Just a quick question. So I'm looking at the map that we have. Is the proposed site, is that the one in the blue, or is that the yellow?
Just so I view this one right here? Yes, I, the, the blue, that is, you're going to see two of magenta, that's the ingress egress easement for Otter Tail Power, but yes, the blue outline is what the footprint, I guess, that Otter Tail Power is requesting.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the council?
I, we just, I know it sounds nice to demolish it all, but I would heed caution that it'll be a lot of money. And is that the best use of our money? So maybe when we get to that point, we can see.
We'll come back to you with those figures, because, yeah, like Brian said, we've estimated that in the C I P for a number of years, but until we get the real numbers, and that has to come back before you, so.
All right, so we do have the recommendation to bring this to the council, accept this, and authorize staff entering that purchase agreement. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Brian. Next, we'll call on Guy Taylor, our public works director, for a discussion on the YMCA lifeguard agreement with Pebble, for Pebble, Pebble Lake. Good morning, Guy.
Morning. Thank you, your honor, council members. Yeah, we're looking to continue our relationship with YMCA for them providing life, lifeguards for the Pebble Beach for the season of two thousand twenty-three, which would be June seventeenth through August twelfth. The terms of the contract remain the same, three equal payments, a total of twenty-five thousand dollars for their services for the season.
Thanks, Guy. Any, someone like to make a motion that we bring this to the council for approval? Thanks, Brent.
Second?
Thanks, Tom. Questions for Guy? Scott?
The terms of the contract are, are these identical to what they've been the last couple of years? The question I've got is, it seems like we had a longer term or more hours per day covered in the past, but maybe not, maybe I'm just not remembering it.
Their hours were shortened last year a little bit, just due to the fact they were, the lifeguards were needing to be paid more per hour to keep up with the economy, I guess, so the hours were shortened, their wage was increased. So, yeah, the terms changed last year due to that, but from last year to this year, the same.
Thanks, Scott. Any other questions? If there's a motion to bring this to the council, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. Last item for this portion of the meeting is the salt and sand storage building discussion. Again, Guy Taylor.
Thank you, your honor. As indicated in the memo, we had been in a cooperative agreement with the state and the county, you know, back in the nineties, that started for a salt and sand storage structure on the state's property over on East Douglas. The county pulled out of that agreement after a few years of being in the three-way agreement. And so it's just been the state and the city. We've used that facility, we initially paid ninety thousand dollars to be a partner in that, and now the state's plan, they're going to build a new facility, and it's a very elaborate facility, and our share, now being only two partners, would be well over what it would cost to just build our own facility. So proposing to build this Atlas L-ten series building provided by Greystone Construction, it's the same type of storage facility you see in most cities around the country, basically. It's the hoop-style building with the canvas cover, and we would have enough storage in that facility for a year's worth of material, where now in the shared facility, we have to haul midway in the season because we don't have enough for our own, in the space that we're given. So logistics and cost-wise, it's two hundred and forty-some thousand dollars, an expensive project, but given the alternative of being a partner with the state, this is our, the best way to go, in my view. So that's the proposal, or the recommendation to authorize purchase of this building, which would be through Sourcewell. So the negotiation piece has been done through Sourcewell, and then we would have this building constructed by them and in use for the twenty-three, twenty-four winter season.
Thanks, Guy.
I'll make that.
Thanks. Do that by motion, there's a motion, do that. Brent, Scott, thank you. Scott, go ahead.
Where would you, where would this building be built?
Yeah, thank you for that question. So it'll be down at the public works facility, north of the main shop building. If you can picture on the north side, we've got an impound lot in the area where we store picnic tables, it would be in that area.
Thanks, Scott. Thanks, Guy. Further questions? All in favor of the motion to bring this to the council, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. With that, we are going to adjourn this committee meeting, and we will immediately reconvene for a special meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council. It is eight oh five on May tenth, two thousand twenty-three. We'll call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. There's one item of business to discuss this morning, and that is the hearing to appeal the city's denial of T H C edible sales license to Lincoln Vapors. And I will turn it over to our Chief of Public Safety, Kyle Berg.
I guess I'm the winner. Morning, your honor and council. Thank you. Yes, today's meeting is in regards to a denial of an application for T H C edibles by Lincoln Vapors, or Lincoln Vapes, also known as Lincoln Vapors LLC. That application was submitted to the city on March sixteenth of two thousand twenty-three. And for our ordinance, a background check was completed of the owners and general manager, and, and based on the findings of that background check, it was my recommendation that the license be denied. As also outlined in our ordinance, Lincoln Vapors has filed an appeal, which is their right, and that's what's triggering this meeting today. And we do have Mr. Danbury, Mr. Fetchner, and Severson in attendance for today's meeting, I think in your packet, I'll just say this, I'll just briefly describe the rationale for the denial. We'll give the gentlemen an opportunity to address you, and then at the end of the meeting, basically, we'll look at, you can either approve the, the license, you can deny the license, or at times, it's been referred back to me to work with all parties involved and come to an agreement, so. In your packet, you should have received a copy of a report that outlines the background check that was completed by the Fergus Falls Police Department. I won't go through that line by line, there's, there's obviously a lot of information in there. I think that the main issues for me are the, are the parts of the background check regarding controlled substance convictions on some of the parties involved in the business. I think there was one in Clay County as early as two thousand and eleven, and then there was one in federal, United States Federal Court, I think District of North Dakota, that was around two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen. So that, those are kind of the, the main issues for me as, as far as, as the denial. The only other thing that I'll discuss briefly is just, you know, Lincoln Vapes has been in, in business for a while, and they do have a nicotine or tobacco license. And within the last year, we did have one failed compliance check there. I think we received a complaint around July twenty-second of two thousand twenty-two, and then we followed up with a compliance check in August, so. So other than that, unless you have questions, I think the report is basically the facts that I use to base my recommendation on. And if you have any questions for me, I'll certainly answer them at this time. Otherwise, I would turn it over to the owners and the manager to discuss their view on it.
Thank you, chief. Questions for Chief Bergen before we turn it over to Mr. Danbury, Mr. Fetscher, and Mr. Severson? Okay, thanks. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning. My name is Justin Danbury.
I'm Todd Fickner.
I'm Dustin Severson.
I think if you were to look at the packet that the police chief had, I would, I agree going off of that for the denial. So I just want to be clear that I completely understand why we were denied. If you're just basing it off of that packet without knowing who we are today as opposed to who our track record says we were, I know that for myself, I made some mistakes when I was younger, and I've been paying for those mistakes ever since. And I've done the best that I could to sort of separate myself from becoming somebody that I didn't want to be. And what I wanted to be was just a normal, average, law-abiding citizen. So I corrected my path and spent the last 20 years doing that. Now, currently a multiple business owner, we have one here in Fergus Falls, and we have two businesses in Fargo. One is also a nicotine sales store, it's a vape shop in Fargo. And then we also have a snow removal and agricultural landscaping business. I guess my biggest, my biggest point is that I don't believe that we would be a net negative if we were allowed to sell these products in our store. And the reason being is we all have experience with substance abuse issues and people who suffer from substance abuse issues. I, I, personally, for me, I'm not a big fan of THC products. I do understand that they are beneficial to some people, and I think that we could be a responsible place for these products, just because of who we are and our backgrounds. But, I mean, today, I live a pretty boring life. Most of my time is just spent running businesses or at home. I have three kids at home and a wife and a mortgage and car payments and bike payments. So I'm not who my background suggests, not anymore, anyway. Like I said, I live a pretty boring life. But I do feel that we would not be a net negative to the city of Fergus Falls if we are granted this license because, just because of our awareness of substance abuse, the potential that these things can have on a community, on people. I just think we would be a positive, a net positive, not a net negative. So I'll let.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I'm Todd Fickner. I am one of the ones with controlled substances on my background history. I echo a lot of his thoughts as well. I think that our experience is a benefit. We can educate the public as they come in for these products. Since my controlled substance, I've got 12 years in recovery, went to college, started businesses. I am the vice president on the board of directors for a treatment center in Morehead. I'm not what I was. I've spent the last 12, 12 and a half years trying to make amends and, you know, continue down the right path. I'm terrible at this speaking thing, I'm super nervous.
You're doing fine.
But I don't, I don't really have a lot more to add to that, other than I'm not what this piece of paper says I am, so.
Thank you, Todd.
And one thing I do want to touch on was that, that failed compliance check that we had last year, that I'm not okay with that. That's not, that's not how I want the business to be ran. It's 21-plus. Dustin will cover that when he talks, he was the one in charge of the shop, running the shop. It's day-to-day operations. It was a mistake on his part. Again, that's, that's something I'm, as far as marketing goes, I don't like a lot of the things that happened in not only our industry, the nicotine industry, vape product industry, but also that's happening now in the THC industry, and that's a lot of child marketing. I'm not a fan of it, I don't like it, I don't advocate for it, and I definitely don't advocate for selling to an underage person. That, it's, and it's not just like, oh, no, we're gonna be in trouble because we did this. No, I, you know what I mean? I have kids, I understand these, the addictive nature of these products. I'm not a fan of any type of underage sales, but it was a mistake on his part. You know, we did handle it, we did talk to him, and made sure that he needs to card everybody every time, no matter what. But I'll let him talk about that.
Thank you.
Hello. So, yeah, as far as that, like, I made a mistake. I knew, well, I thought, like, I seen the kid come in there many a times with an ID, and I thought it was the same kid anyway, but it turned out to not be the same kid. So, yeah, no, I carded every time. But as far as my background, it's pretty rocky according to this. And since I was indicted in 2012, like, I've changed my life around. I went to treatment while I was in prison, completed treatment, got out, and now I like, I'm a big, big member of Narcotics Anonymous, like, and I go to the jail, they let me into the jail to bring meetings in there, my background didn't affect that. And, yeah, like, I have 10 years, almost 10 years clean now, and I'm not good at public speaking either, but I also believe that we can benefit other people just from our past experiences, and that's all I got.
Thanks. Thanks to both of you, and congratulations on sobriety for the length of time that you've had. I know that's a big deal, so congratulations on that. Jim?
I want to make a statement.
Please do.
I got 53 years of sobriety, so I know where you guys are at. You're not even close to what I have in years, but it's tough to now have to pay for things after you've got your life straightened around. And I really think that we should give this company a chance and monitor them, and if there's a problem, then we pull it. But I think just listening to these guys and them being sober for the number of years they are, I think they deserve a chance.
Thank you, Jim. I think that the ability to redeem yourself in life is important. I appreciate that very much, Jim. So, let's.
I'll second if Jim's made that motion, then I will second it.
And we'll have some discussion, and we'll ask the chief. So thank you for that, Jim. Thanks, Anthony. Please, Tom.
Yeah, and I'll echo what Jim said. I mean, it takes a lot of courage to come up here and explain yourselves in this setting. I can only imagine that you're a little nervous about it, and, yeah, it kind of looks like you guys have been there, done that, got the T-shirt. But I agree with Jim, I think that, you know, you know, being, being involved in helping other people in their recovery is very important. And, you know, I worked in gas stations when I was in high school, I, you know, thankfully never failed a compliance check, but I, it's, it's not, not excusable, but it happens and it's, and it's, you're not the first ones. And, you know, I would just encourage you to do everything that you can. You know, obviously, you guys know the dangers of young people getting a hold of substances that they shouldn't, and, and what can come from that. But, but I also applaud you on your sobriety, and, yeah, I'm, I would say that I'm certainly willing to give you the benefit of the doubt as a business that contributes, you know, tax revenue to our community, just like any other.
Thanks, Tom. Is it accurate to summarize your motion to grant a license contingent upon the chief of police monitoring and supervising the dislicense? Is that accurate?
Just one comment, too, for you fellas. Good for you for turning things around or trying to turn things around. But why, why would you want to stay in that kind of a business that maybe you could be tempted at? You know, with, with the THC? I mean, I guess, I don't understand that. You know, I don't know, Jim, you know, with your recovery, you know, I don't know if you were, what your recovery was from, but I don't think you stayed in that business or were associated with it, maybe, I don't know. I guess that's my question.
I wasn't in that business in the first place, I just drank a lot.
Yeah, but I'm saying, but I'm saying you didn't work in a liquor store, though, so that's what I'm getting at. So that's where I'm, I guess that's my question for you fellas.
Sure. I, I can try to break this down as simple as possible. For me, this specific product was, was never the, I'm an alcoholic, so this specific product, there's, for me personally, there's, there's no type of temptation. So I don't know if you can understand that or not, but for me, it's the drink, and that's, so it'd be very different if I was trying to open up a liquor store, for me personally.
Right.
But that, that's just, that's where I'm, I'm at on it. As far as why do I want to sell this product? I do struggle with that internally, from a, from a business and financial standpoint. I guess it makes sense, we're a 21 and up store. We do sell very similar products, just in the, in the way that they're delivered, I guess, that, you know, how, how somebody would take them in. So it kind of falls into that. But between the financial aspect of it, and I think, I just think we would, we could do a good job with it, given our background and understanding the product itself.
Jim, thanks. Thank you.
Sometimes it's, it's because they're, they're doing this because they can help other people, but they also, they're proven to themselves that they can do this and not use. And that, that's a big thing, it really is. If you can, if you can sell it and not use it, you're gonna go a long way.
Mm-hmm. I.
I'm sorry, up until, you know, everything that, with this, the licensing law and everything, we had carried these products in our store, you know, and as far as I know, we haven't had any issues, but other than the nicotine infraction last year.
Just one more thing, if I may. I guess I'd like to, you know, with that motion, what Officer, Chief Bergen would, his comment on that would be?
We'll definitely get back to you. We're gonna.
I, I grew up in a home recovering alcoholic, and I understand you guys completely, but I'm not an expert, and I have to follow what Chief Bergen says to us, and that's his job to advise us, and so I will know against it, so.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Scott?
A question regarding how the licensing and application process works. If we were to deny this license application now, can they come back after a window of time? Is it a year, is it five years, is it never? What's the, what's the window if they were to be denied today before they could come back again, or can they not come back again?
You can make an application as often as you'd like.
So it's, it's, they could come back tomorrow with a new application, they don't have to wait a year, there's, that, okay. Then the second comment I guess I would make is, there's legislation currently underway at the state, you know, on all things related to marijuana, and that isn't finished yet. And we might have other things that we're going to be dealing with around this issue, not specific to your business necessarily, but just around this issue, so to speak, coming up here within the next several weeks. I wouldn't think it would be wrong to kind of wait and see, basically, as to where that's gonna put us. I agree with Scott Rachel's on his comments regarding our chief of police's recommendation. I agree that it would be best, I feel that it would be best for us to follow the chief's recommendation in this case, and that if you guys want to come back with a new application, I think that'd be, you know, certainly your right to do it.
Thanks, Scott. Just, we'll ask the chief here to come up in a minute after the council and talking about, I think any regulation would have local licensing from our police department, so I don't think that's going to change, so that issue's not going to go away with the new legislation. We do have a resolution in a second, we'll vote on that in a minute, but I did want to give Chief Bergen a chance. Brent, before we call him Chief Bergen, did you have any?
I mean, when I went through all these, I mean, there's a lot of traffic violations and everything else, and I'm not looking at those. What I'm looking at is, you're, you're dealing with a product that's gonna come with a lot of rules. And, I mean, you talk about, you know, how you've been clean, which is great and everything else for so many years, but, I mean, we have multiple, between a few of you are now, what do you call them, restraining order violations. We also have one person here who has, up until, ooh, 2018, been driving on revocation and caught 11 times. That tells me that the rules don't apply. And if, if we can't trust you with something as simple as this, let alone a controlled substance, I'm gonna be voting against.
Thanks, Brent. Last comments from the council before we ask Chief Bergen, did you have any, would you like to make some comments?
Sure, I'll just kind of wrap up here and answer some of those questions that were asked. To Scott's point about the pending legislation, I do think that there is some potential for change in how this product is licensed, and it might not be under the city's purview anymore, it might be under the state purview. And again, we have to see if that legislation passes and, you know, probably go into effect August 1st. So that's one thing that I spoke with the gentleman about, you know, regardless of what happens here, there's a potential come August 1st that you can apply with the state. I'll just say I'm fine with any outcome of the council. You know, you pay me to, to make recommendations, and I try to make those recommendations based on the facts that I have before me. So I would just say with the motion that was made by Councilmember Fish, I'm completely fine with that. I think I would maybe tweak that to say that we're gonna issue a probationary license, and I think if the gentleman were in agreement, that that license would simply state that we'll, you know, issue the license, but if we have one violation of any part of the ordinance, that that license would be revoked at that time. And if they make it through the remainder of this calendar year, they would have to reapply next year, and then the normal rules as outlined in our ordinance would be in play at that time. So, again, I'm, I'm fine with any decision the council makes, I think it's kind of up to you now to choose your path, so.
Thanks, chief. I think that's more than reasonable, if it's acceptable.
Yes.
And I think it's a resolution. We'll make it a resolution approving, your, a resolution approving a probationary license for the applicant based on supervision by the chief of police.
That'd be fine with me. I think, I think it's, I mean, I, I hear the concerns on both sides, but I think you can, there's other places in town you can buy THC, so, you know, I think, I don't think it's gonna be any more of an issue than if, if somebody wants to illegally get this, this product, they don't go to a storefront to get it. So I will vote in favor of it.
All right. So with that, everyone understand the resolution that's on the floor? Roll call, please. No.
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 Yes.
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes.
The resolution fails. With that, if there's no more business to come before this council, I thank you for exercising your right of appeal this morning, and we're adjourned.
Thank you for your guys' time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.